Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to our June 23rd, 25th meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa zoning Board of Adjustments. Any written comments sent to the staff were forwarded to the Board directly. Now at this time, I'd like to introduce the staff and members. Chad Hobbs, Senior Associate City Attorney. Hudson Cheshire, Associate City Attorney. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Jonathan Bowen, Zoning Administrator. Liam O'Leary, Planner. Angie Terrell, Administrative Assistant. Kevin Powell, helping out with the video production in the back. I'll ask the Board members if they would introduce themselves, starting to my left.
Mary Catherine Holt.
Tiam Gillum.
Michelle Coley.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Now by virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the zoning Board of Adjustments is as follows. Here's appeals from zoning officers decisions. We grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the City Council. Now grants variances from the zoning code when strict enforcement creates an unnecessary hardship. Now circumstances that are not hardships include those that are self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenient, and/or personal. Now the zoning Board of Adjustments does not interpret or enforce subdivision covenants or HOA rules. Now those matters are not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Now there were signup sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of the petition, and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. Now all speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. The Board will take up items in the order of our final agenda. Now the Board will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Now after the staff's presentation, I will call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now at the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will call on any party in order of signup who desires to support the petition. Now thereafter, I will call on any party in order of signup, those who oppose the petition. Now when it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself stating your name and address to the Board. To provide your remarks, any written comments have been included into the record. Now after receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Now any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the Board allows for a longer time. Now if the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, the Board will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Now any response will be limited to two minutes unless the Board allows for a longer time. Now during the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the Board for clarification or additional information. Now such interruptions will not reduce or allow time limit. Now once the Board members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will close further discussion by the public at which time the Board members will discuss the matter and then vote. Now after the vote, you are free to leave. Now these proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Now any party aggrieved by any final judgment or decision of such zoning Board of Adjustment made within 15 days thereafter appealed therem from to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. Now do any members of the Board have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters? If so, please state the same for the record. No? Okay. I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law to all matters before the Board tonight.
Yes, it has.
Okay. We have one change to the agenda tonight. ZBA 32-25 is requesting to withdraw their application. I need a motion and a second to move this item under cases to be withdrawn.
So moved.
Second.
Voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Okay, it's been withdrawn. All right, Mr. Bowen, we're ready to start presentations.
Good afternoon, Board. So we'll first start with our cases requesting to be withdrawn, beginning with that ZBA 32-25. This will require a motion and a move by the Board members.
Need a motion?
Uh huh.
Second.
Voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Approved.
All right, the next case is ZBA 42-25. They are also requesting to withdraw.
Oh, okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Approved.
All right, now we'll move into our cases to be heard. We'll begin with ZBA 33-25. Abdullah Musson petitions for a special exception to operate a light vehicle repair shop. This is on the property at 4115 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District 7. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view and the image. This was previously used as Horton's Garage. We just have a couple images of the front and then around the back to the rear of their property. So they are requesting to operate a new and used tire shop. It was previously used as a mechanic shop. The new services will include tire installation and brakes. They will not perform any mechanical work except for light vehicle repairs. Any tires and all tires will be stored inside the building, and the hours of operations will be seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The business will have three full-time employees. Here we have those applicable regulations. We did not receive any public comment, and we do have the petitioner here in person. Do you have any questions for staff? Thanks.
Okay, so Mr. Abdullah Musson?
Good evening. My name is Sam Shojia. I'm a professional engineer, and I live at 5,000 Overbrook Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35405. I'm representing the owner. As you mentioned, there's been a repair shop for, before us, so many years, and we just want to do basically the same thing. And the hours of operation is going to be basically from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00, 7:00 in the afternoon. It's going to be all light duty mechanic work, no bodywork or radio restoration and stuff like that. So it's just all change, brakes, tires, and similar mechanic work.
Okay. Any questions?
I think it's property zone. We're just asking for special permission to be able to do that business.
Special exception. Are you the owner or are you?
No, I'm an engineer representing the owner, A1 Investments, Mr. Najee.
Okay, you're representing the owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Sam. I got it, okay. Any questions? I'm not the only one that was asked. They're asking me.
The only is really A1 Investments. I guess Mr. Abdullah Najee is the probably president of the corporation.
I got you, no problem. Any questions?
And I got the gentleman who's going to have a shop over there here to do the business. He has already got his business license and fire department, already checked the site. They've been there, they approved it. We just came to get the city license. They told us we need to come here, get a...
A special exception?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So our concern is this fence and how it, and that, and we're wanting to recommend that you need to have the privacy or screening. You need to have screening. If you keep the current fence, put some screening in it or replace it with a privacy fence. That's one stipulation that we're looking to put on there because...
I don't think that'd be a big issue.
Right, and so we just need to put that into the motion, that that's a requirement for that area. Anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? No, no, I was speaking to the general. So there's nobody that would like to speak for or against, so we'll close public comment and go to board comment, starting with Mary Catherine.
Sorry. Just so I understand, we're adding the stipulation for the screening on the fence. Is that regardless of whether or not there's dismantled vehicles being stored behind the fence?
It's because of that possibility with it being the shop. And right here it says, "No wrecked or dismantled vehicles shall be stored outside of a building or fenced in disclosure no longer than two weeks. Must be used screening, no outdoor storage." So that's what it's kind of comply.
I'm fine with this, with the screening.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as long as the stipulation for the screen area, I mean, it's always seemed to be a repair, tire store, some type of business along those lines, so therefore I have no issue.
I agree with my fellow board members. That's the best use of the property, and it's great to see it so quickly be taken up and not just sitting empty.
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. Come back up to the mic. Come back up.
I just want to make sure that fabric screening be all right to add it to the...
What type of screening?
Fabric.
Fabric screening?
That is something we can work, that should be fine, but we can work with you tomorrow on the screening.
Just didn't want to put up a new privacy fence.
Yes, yeah, fabric screening will be fine. We won't stipulate what type of screening, we'll just say it needs to have screening. So at this time, we'll close board comment, and we will read the petition. ZBA-33-25, Abdullah Musson petitions for a special exception to operate a light vehicle repair shop on the property located at 4115 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District 7. Voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Petition approved. Oh, do I need to read in the screening?
If we could...
Okay, for the record, I'll read that in and we'll vote again. ZBA-33-25, Abdullah Musson petitions for a special exception to operate a light vehicle repair shop on the property located at 4115 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District 7, with the stipulation screening be added to the fence. Voting again, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
All right, we'll move on to ZBA 34-25. Jack Sala petitions for a special exception to operate a light vehicle repair shop. This is on the property at 3515 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District 7. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view and a close-up. So it currently exists as a tire shop, as you can see today. The existing building is being used as a tire store. The petitioner plans to construct a new auto service center. This will perform mechanical services including repairs, oil changes, brakes, tires, and electrical work. There will not be any auto paint or bodywork performed on this site. You can see the hours of operations as noted, and there will be under 10 employees. Here we have those applicable regulations, and then this is the proposed site plan for that new auto service center. You can see the multiple bay doors and service areas. We have talked with applicant about new outside storage on this site. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the representative here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
Seems like we're getting a lot of tire stores lately.
I think so, yeah.
So we must be rough on tires in Tuscaloosa. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, Ms. Sam Shojia, you coming back up to speak for Jack Sala?
Good evening again. My name is Sam Shojia. I live at 5,000 Overbrook Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35405. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Alabama, representing the owner, which is Aiden Investments. I guess the president is Mr. Sala. This property has been used for car lot before and has been recently used for tire repair shop. We're going to remove all the structures. We are proposing to construct a probably about 7,500 to 8,000 square feet building. It's basically going to do light mechanic work, just like brakes, tires, oil change, any mechanical work. No bodywork and no radiator restorations or heavy trucks.
Okay. Any questions?
This is basically a concept that we drawn to explain to you that we got enough parkings to furnish for the customers and the vehicles. The building is right now 50 by 7,500. We'd probably like to have it up to 8,000 square feet, and I don't think there's an issue to have the parking spot.
You're going to tear down, you're going to tear down the current vehicle?
Yes, everything is going to be removed. We're going to have all new plans submitted for permit and after you give us a go-ahead on special permission to do that. We're going to have probably more likely privacy fence similar to other shops, and hours of operation is going to be basically the same thing from 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. to 6:00, 7:00 p.m. as is demanded.
Any questions? Which petition?
I really think it's going to be more statically appealing to our city, and more revenue would be also coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comment, starting with Ms. Hamner.
Sounds like the use of the site is remaining the same even though there will be a new building, so I have no issues with this.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance, have no issue.
I see it as an improvement. That little building's been there forever, so I think it's a major improvement. Looking forward to it. I'm in agreement.
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA-34-25, Jack Sala petitions for a special exception to operate a light vehicle repair shop on the property located at 3515 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District 7. Voting, Ms. Hamner?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
All right, we'll move into our short-term rentals for the night, beginning with ZBA 35-25. Carlos Ochoa petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property. This is at 32 Spring Brook, Zone SFR 2, Council District 7. Here we have the zoning of the property, aerial view, and then image of all the short-term rentals in the general area. Then here we have the house as well as that parking area. Carlos Ochoa will be the primary contact and be available in case of any emergencies. The petitioner does have experience with managing short-term rentals in our area. The house is equipped with keypad locks and outside cameras. It is not owner-occupied, and it'll be vacant when it's not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and one bathroom. Their request is for seven adults and three vehicles. Based off the parking and the bedrooms, staff would recommend six adults and three vehicles. We did not receive any public comments for this request. Do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Carlos?
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Ochoa, and I live in 7731 Forest Valley Road. And we'd like to see if we can get this property approved for a short-term rental.
Okay. And you have experience, do you have another short-term rental you manage or...?
Yes, ma'am, it's one Arlington Drive.
Okay, all right. And how long have you had it?
We had it for roughly maybe eight months, nine months, yeah. So near the year.
Any other questions?
No issues with, on its current?
No issues.
All right. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this short-term rental? Okay, we'll close public comment and go to board comment with Ms. Holt.
Yeah, based on the pictures that we saw, I'm in agreement with the staff recommendations of six adults and three vehicles.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance as well with staff recommendation. Petitioner obviously hasn't had any issues in the past, so I'm good with it.
Okay. And I didn't ask you if you were okay with that, Mr. Carlos? Let's find six adults and three vehicles if we approve it, and that'll be 30 nights, probation, one-year probation if it's approved. I don't have any problem with that, knowing no off-street parking, all of it has to be in the driveway.
I have no issues, I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
Okay, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the recommendation. ZBA-35-25, Carlos Ochoa petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 32 Spring Brook, Zone SFR 2, Council District 7. Six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights, one-year probation. Voting, Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
Next case is ZBA 36-25. Barbara Umpervis petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 2705 First Street East. This property is Zone SFR 1, Council District 5. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial view, image of the short-term rentals in the area, and then an image of that house with the parking areas. Got one more here. So Brianna Umpervis will be the primary contact and be available in case of any emergencies. The petitioner does not have experience managing short-term rentals. The house will be equipped with keypad locks and outside cameras. It is not owner-occupied, but it will be used by the property owner or remain vacant when it's not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner's request is for eight and four, and based off of the parking, staff would recommend eight adults and four vehicles. We did not receive any comments on this request. Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you pull up a site map of this property?
Yes.
An overall?
You want the aerial view?
Aerial view.
Okay. And I'll go back one more just to show it a little bit more large.
Is it owner-occupied?
The owner does, does own it. I don't know if it is owner-occupied. I'll let the applicant confirm that.
Are there any issues with the gravel driveway?
No, so the gravel driveway has existed. If they were ever to reconfigure it or if it were to be altered or expanded, then it would need to be something permanent, but as it exists, it could exist as gravel.
Okay, thank you. Barbara?
Hi, my name is Barbara Umpervis. I live at 1298 Blanca in Los Lunas, New Mexico. I purchased the house, 2705 First Street E, and I would like to make it a short-term rental. This is my first one, so I've utilized some people that I know here to help me throughout the process.
So you say you live in New Mexico?
I do, yes. My daughter goes to school here. She has a lease starting August 1st, so she'll be here for the next two years.
So who is going to be the person that's contacted 24 hours?
She is. She's my designated agent, yes.
Okay, so she'll be the one, where will she stay when it's being rented out?
She's rented an apartment.
Oh, okay, she has her own apartment?
Yes.
So the house is empty?
It will be empty, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
So eight adults is a lot, a first-time short-term rental especially. I mean, I know you have the parking, but you do have adjacent neighbors that are fairly close. Would you be, would you be interested in doing a six for the first year?
I mean, if I have to. I do have three queen beds and a bunk bed in the fourth bedroom.
It's not about...
And it's really, a really big front yard.
It's not about the spacing, it's about the fact that your daughter's going to be the one that's going to be managing it, and eight and four becomes almost like a party. And so if there's an issue, so we like to start you out with six and three, see how it goes, and then if you don't have any issues, then the next year you can go up.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think that's a good call.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience, no one signed up? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close board comment, and we'll start comment with, close public comment, and go to board comment with Ms. Holt.
I feel much more comfortable with the six and three, so with that, I'm good with this.
Yeah, I have no issue with the six and three as well.
I agree. It just, I don't know, it's just, that's just a thing. When it's your first time doing it, it can get out of hand, I feel, because with eight adults, that means you can have children, and they can become a real thing, so I'm comfortable with six and three.
I'm in favor of the six and three.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA-36-25, Barbara Umpervis petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2705 First Street East, Zone SFR 1, Council District 5. Six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights, one-year probation. Voting, Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition approved. We're not available right now.
All right, we'll move on to ZBA 37-25. Cahill Properties petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property. This is at 2010 Paul W. Bryant Drive, Zone DHE, Council District 4. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view, and then image of all the short-term rentals in the downtown campus area. And here we have a view of that house with the driveway. So Kyle Alcorn would be the primary contact, be available 24 hours a day in case of an emergency. Libby Alcorn will be available in case of an emergency as well and be local. The petitioner has experience managing one property in Oxford, Mississippi. The house is equipped with keypad locks and a ring doorbell. It is not owner-occupied, and it will be used by the property owner when it's not being rented short-term. House has two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner requests six adults and two vehicles. Based off of the driveway, staff would recommend four adults and two vehicles. We did, I believe we received one comment and support this application.
And seen that before.
I know, it's very rare, but we did receive one in support, so...
Very good.
Yeah. Any questions for staff?
No questions. All right, Khalil Properties? Kyle?
So my name is Kyle Alcorn. I reside at 1027 North Kings Highway, Sykesville, Missouri. My daughter will be attending the university this fall. She's 19, and so we previously had a rental, my son went to Ole Miss, and we have a rental in Santa Rosa Beach, Florida, so we've done short-term rentals over the last four years. I would request to consider the six. We have one bedroom as a king, the other has two queens.
So for us, it's not the sleeping, what it'll sleep, we look at the number of vehicles. And so when you have two vehicles, we go by vehicles and...
It's just two per...
Mm-hmm, two people per vehicle. And so that's, so the parking is for two. And so that's what the engineering is telling us, and so when we do that, we just use that multiple.
Okay. Would there be a way to see if we could park three vehicles in there? We had three today, but I don't...
So our engineer looked at it, and that's what they came up, go back to the parking. That's what we go by, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I go by what he tells me.
Sure.
Because what happens is, if you do them in tandem and you park two there, usually what happens when somebody backs out, if we do three, they park on the street, and you can't have any on-street parking.
Absolutely.
And so that's why we do two, they're more likely to pull back in.
Okay. Could I ask if you, we could do the four and two, but could we consider six and two, like within some sort of probationary period, like in 180 days or...
We have never done. And what happens is, if we open the door for you, and then we have an issue, that means we have to go out, and we've just found that...
Okay.
Every time we do it, or we, that's how they're going to do it, parking on the grass, especially gaming.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
And just to also clarify, it's four adults and two vehicles, so you could have, you know, four adults and four kids, so...
Oh, we can, okay. So you've got two families.
Yeah, so the family, yeah, yeah, it's adults. That's why we specify adults, not the kids.
Thank you.
That could be 20 little kids running around.
Sure. That's fine.
All right.
Any other questions for me?
But you did argue your case well. We thank you for that. Mississippi, thank you. Uh, we don't have anybody signed up to speak for. We got one letter of support and we've read it and, uh, nobody's here to speak for or against. Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and we'll go to board comment, Ms. Holt.
I'm fine with, uh, staff recommendations of four and two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with the four and two.
He made us seem like we were a little tough there, weren't we? But no, we go with staff recommendations of four and two on this one.
Yes, I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
Okay, we'll close board comment and I'll read the petition. ZBA dash thirty-seven dash twenty-five, Ca- Cahill Properties, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at twenty-ten Paul W. Bryant Drive, Zone DHE, Council District four. Uh, four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights and one-year probation, voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
Next case is ZBA thirty-eight twenty-five, William Serena, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at nineteen Brook Meadows Circle, Zone MR one, Council District seven. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view and all the short-term rentals in our area. Here we have a view of the house with those parking, parking spaces. William Serena, Andrew Serena and Alyssa Serena will be the primary contacts and will be available in case of any emergencies. The petitioner does have experience managing at least one short-term rental. The house will be equipped with keypad locks and outside cameras. It is not owner occupied, but it will be used by the property owner or remain vacant when it's not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and three bathrooms. The petitioner requests seven, or twelve adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request. Do you have any questions for staff?
That's a lot of people, twelve and three. Alright, uh, Mr. Bill Serena?
Yes. Hey, my name is Bill Serena. I live at eighty-four fifteen Ledge Circle in Truswell, Alabama. I have, will have three students here. Uh, one will be on campus, one has a rental house and, uh, my daughter will stay at the rental home until, uh, any short-term rental, she'll stay with her brother here in Tuscaloosa.
She's not gonna like that.
She's good.
No, I understand, okay.
Yeah.
You have another short-term rental? Is it in Brook?
We have hosted with another owner, we've hosted short-term rentals, which basically is managing the whole process and engagement with the guests. Um, you just don't own the home, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Are you okay with our recommendations of six and three?
Uh, so that's six adults, but they, because we have four bedrooms and three full bathrooms and so I, I- I understand it's sleeping arrangements, but parking lot, if there's, I mean, technically you could park four cars there, it's a big parking lot essentially, so.
From what we understand, that each person has three parking spaces, the ones we've done-
That's correct. This development was developed with each unit having three parking spaces. The other short-term rentals approved in this, uh, same neighborhood are all six and three.
Yeah, and this did operate as a short-term rental be, previously as well.
Right, so that's what it's been and so, and I'm just gonna tell you, twelve adults in one house, that is a party house and nobody wants that next door to them, nobody wants that in-
Minimum of two-night rental.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Six and three, alright, if it's approved. Um, no one signed up to speak for or against, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll go with board comment, Ms. Holt.
Uh, I have no issues with this, there's a lot of other short-term rentals in the area, so I'm good.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the other ones and, uh, I decided a short-term, the staff recommendation of six and three.
I agree as well, it just, twelve is just, mm-mm, my office is across the street from there, so. It's nothing to do with it at all, I'm not there on the weekends, so. Alright, I'm in agreement with six and three.
I'm in favor of six and three.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment and we will, um, read the petition. ZBA dash thirty-eight dash twenty-five, William Serena, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at nineteen Brook Meadows Circle, Zone MR dash one, Council District seven. Uh, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights and one-year probation, voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
Next case is ZBA thirty-nine twenty-five, Kinetic Properties LLC, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at sixteen eleven Allica Place on SFR three H, Council District four. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view, an image of all the short-term rentals in the general area. Here we have the picture of the house with that driveway and then the backyard parking area. So Jay Houston or Sherry Cook will be the primary contacts and be available twenty-four hours a day in case of any emergencies. The petitioners are located in Birmingham, Alabama. They have experience managing short-term rentals in the Florida area. The house is equipped with keypad locks and cameras. It is not owner occupied, but it will be used by the property owner as a second home when it's not being rented short-term. The house has three, or five bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. They request eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff would recommend six adults and three vehicles. We did receive nine comments in opposition to this request. Uh, do you have any questions for staff?
Go back, so that back, that, um, space right there, that cannot be a part of the rental.
The, the garage itself?
Yeah, cause it looks like it's got something, like a little sun area.
Is that a bedroom or?
That's correct, yeah, we would treat, we would, the request was for the house, it was not for the, the garage that you see before you, so we would only count it towards the, the house itself. Similar to what we've done with other cases, if they wanted to occupy or use this space, uh, we've treated some of those as separate requests where you have the house in front, um, that would have three bedrooms, their own, um, their own request. And then, for example, if this was a one-bedroom dwelling unit, then that would be a separate request.
I thought we couldn't do, that it's like separate accessory structure, we couldn't do?
So with the updated, the updated ordinance, it does allow, now, I will have to check with the zoning of this property. It may not allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be used. I will say, the only caveat is if this is a legal non-conforming accessory structure, then it's possible that they could use it as a dwelling space.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's not, but it's not included in this, at this time? And we don't need to put any kind of stipulation at this time?
That's correct, it's just for the house itself.
Okay. So we don't need to say you can't rent this out unless you get a short-term rental?
I'll, I'll, if you want to include that, I'll let the petitioners comment to see if they have any, um, if, if they wanna make any comment about that.
Okay. Any other questions about that?
No, I agree with-
Yeah, I was just, okay, so the petitioner, um, Houston Cook and Sherry Cook, Kinetic Properties?
Good afternoon, um, I'm Houston Cook, uh, live at, uh, four-two-four-four Old Brook Trail in Birmingham, Alabama. And, uh, my wife and I, Sherry, bought this house, um, I guess about six or eight months ago. We do have a lot of experience renting, uh, short-term rental property in Florida primarily, well, totally before this. We started renting down there in two thousand and one, we've owned seven or eight homes. At one point, we had four properties down there, today we have two, uh, we've sold a couple. And, um, so, uh, yeah, the one question that we had is, uh, we did request the, uh, four parking spaces and eight adults, um, which I know they're, y'all are rec, your recommendation was the six and, uh, the three and six. Um, one question we had is whether, if we, if we are, if we allow the guests to use the garage, if that would influence whether we could get an extra car?
So, I'm sure engineering took that into consideration when they were, when they were looking at it, yeah. Cause it's all about like the tandem parking and how you can pull out and everything like that.
And how, how they get in and out and all that.
Right, yes, sir.
Being able to turn around and get out and that type of thing. Um, yeah, that's why they said that, so three, um. Yeah, it's really tight in there, so.
And the, the back, kind of, I guess you call it a sort of carriage house, is not a, you know, it does not have a full bath. It's really like a den and it's got a half-bath in it. So it could be used for entertaining space or other stuff, but it's not a fully functioning bedroom.
Okay, so that wouldn't be in a consideration, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions? Anything else you'd like to share with this?
Sorry?
I see you're okay with the six and three?
Yeah, we'll, we'll comply with that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we had, this is the one we had, the nine in opposition. Um, so we've read and taken those into consideration. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against? No one signed up? Yes, sir, you can come up.
My name is Jim Vaults and my wife and I live at sixteen twenty-one Allica Place, which is several houses toward Queen City Avenue from this structure, which is beautiful, it's a beautiful picture. The biggest problem we have, not in this particular situation, but our street, i- is the original street, used to be a one, a one-lane up to the old house that was moved to the side, w- w- which back in the days, uh, even though I'm elderly before I was born, and Allica Place was just a one-lane drive coming into this magnificent plantation home. If you look at, if you pull up that map that you showed a minute ago, you'll see that all these lots are about fifty feet wide. And all those structures are well over two thousand square feet. So none of them will be approved to be built today, cause we really have a problem, especially during ballgames and other weekends when things are going on downtown. We worry about emergency vehicles not being able to get through if, if somebody needed it. Because right now, the width of the street would not allow parking spaces on either side of the, of the road, of the driveways. So we are always fighting to try to get people in and out of there without having additional rentals, like I can't imagine putting six cars or that many, i- I don't even know if you could get, if you look at that driveway, it's hard to get one car back there, much less four or five. I don't think they can get out. So as much as I love to see progress in whatever it is, this didn't, doesn't seem like a good use for this neighborhood to turn it into a, a multifamily rental situation with the, with the emergency vehicle situation, the narrow lots, the congestion, and there are other places to have apartments nearby, and I would be opposed of it.
We thank you, that's why we, um, with the short-term rental, they cannot park on the street. And that's why we're limiting, um, what he asked for to just three cars, so that they can feasibly be in the, two in the back and then one maybe in the drive or something of that nature. But they are not allowed to park on the street and if you see the short-term rentals parked on the street, please call three-one-one and report it.
Well, th- th- this is just using common sense, I mean, I, I don't, if you did study of the neighborhood, the congestion in the neighborhood already, i- is, 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 it's just not a, not a good place to have this, I buy opinion.
Sure, I understand. Thank you for your comment.
Any other questions?
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Would you like to respond, uh, Mr. Cook?
Hi, I didn't come up here originally, I'm Sherry Cook. And, um, just quickly, we, we owned the house during the last, um, football season. And so the city of Tuscaloosa puts out markers on one side of the street every game day so that there can only be parking by the public on the other side of the street and it is passable. Um, and so we parked in the driveway last year during game day and had our family here with, um, dare I say, more than three cars, but I do understand the restriction. And, um, did not see any issue with cars being able to pass back and forth.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close public comment and we'll go to board comment, Ms. Holt?
Yeah, so I am sympathetic to the concerns of navigating Allica Place. I've had some friends live over there and at times it does get pretty congested, but I am okay with, uh, six adults and three vehicles with the understanding that the vehicles cannot park on the road.
Yeah, that, I mean, there's other short-term rentals in this area, uh, and, Ron, I was reading through the oppositions, it was more people concerned about the number of vehicles or more up for the three, which, uh, we agree with staff recommendations, so I'm, I'm good with the six and three.
And the biggest thing about it, just like the petitioner stated, when they had family over, they could have as many cars as they wanted in the drive and park on the street and whatever. And you can't do anything to control it, but when you have short-term rental, that's why we have all those stipulations, because you, as the property owner, will be more in, con- inclined to treat the neighborhood a certain way, as opposed to someone who's renting, they may not, you know, be as concerned. So that's why we have the limitations of the six adults and three vehicles. Um, so I'm okay with that recommendation of the staff.
I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
At this time, we'll close board comment and I'll go to reading the petition. ZBA dash thirty-nine dash twenty-five, Kinetic Properties LLC, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at sixteen eleven Allica Place, Zone SFR dash three-eight, Council District four. Voting with Ms. Holt.
Do we need to read the?
Oh, six adults and three vehicles, thirty nights and one-year probation.
Yes.
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 Petition approved.
Next case is ZBA forty twenty-five, Tim Butel, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at fourteen twenty-seven Deering Place, Zone SFR three H, Council District four. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view, image of all the short-term rentals in the area. And then a view of the house and a view of the parking area. The parking area is actually behind the house, I'll go back to the aerial just to notate that. You would actually enter the driveway off of fifteenth Avenue. So we'll go back just to show the house and then the parking area to the rear. Here we have an image of the tenant space, this is the area in which the applicant would wish to short-term rent. You see a tenant space, bathroom and a closet. Tim and Susan Butel would be the primary contacts and be available twenty-four hours a day in case of an emergency. They are located in Florida, however Brett Butel would be located in Tuscaloosa and will also be available in case of an emergencies. The petitioner does not have experience managing short-term rentals. The house is equipped with keypad locks, cameras and a security system. It is not owner occupied and it will be used by family or be rented, uh, while it's not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and three bathrooms. The petitioner requests four adults and two vehicles. If approved, based off of just the tenant space, uh, staff would recommend two adults and one vehicle. We did not receive any public comment for this request. We do have the applicant here in person, do you have any questions for staff?
So they're not gonna do the whole house, they're gonna use just that little section?
That is our understanding, that, I, after speaking with the Office of City Engineers, if they did plan to rent it out to the whole house, they would be comfortable with four adults and two vehicles honoring the petitioner's request. If it's just for that one bedroom, then we would recommend two adults and one vehicle for just the one bedroom.
And they can't be on property when this one space is rented, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So we have to put a stipulation, it's only that one bedroom if they petitioned it?
The, the recommendation would, would suffice for that with it being two adults and one vehicle. It would limit it to only two people, or, you know, two adults being able to occupy that space.
Okay, and they'll only be able to do that space, okay. Alright, thank you. Uh, Tim Butrell? But, Butell?
Butell.
Butell?
Yes.
Do tell.
Do tell, Butell, yes.
Alright, state your name and your address for us.
Uh, Tim Butell, five oh seven Yastrox Circle, Gulf Breeze, Florida, three-two-five-six-one.
Welcome to Tuscaloosa.
I like it here.
Um, tell us what your plans are.
So, we bought the house, um, for places to stay when we're in town. And the previous owners, uh, used the bottom, it's like on a hill, it's a room with a separate exit as a rental in the past. And I realized we needed to get permission if we're gonna do something like that, we've never rented before. So the entrance is right there on the left and then if you use the stairs to get up, you come into the actual house.
So where that door is, that's what we're renting out?
It goes right into a bedroom. It's got a, just a big room with two beds in it.
And you're only wanna do that, that room right there, right?
That's correct.
Not the whole house.
That's correct. But I do have, do I have other requests now that I've been here and gotten to absorb all the information? Um, just so I understand, if we were to petition rent out the whole house, we'd get four adults and two vehicles. We're not gonna be there if it ever does rent, so why would we not get the same?
Cause of the parking. When the engineers looked at the parking, that's what they said.
It's the, the parking and the bedroom, so per the code, we allow two, two adults per bedroom. So if you're just renting out one space, that's why-
It's the bedroom, not the parking?
That's correct. If you were to rent out the whole house, then it could be-
So I could go for, if we rented it out, we'd come back and have a new petition rent out the house. Uh, but right now it's just a room. And that's fine. Cause it's based on the room, not parking.
Well, it depends on the parking, if our parking becomes limited, it's two people per car.
Yes, ma'am.
So if the parking is two vehicles, then that's what can determine it, even if it's more, ha, more rooms in the house. Cause the parking, it's a twofold kinda thing.
But if you're just doing the room, y'all can't stay there. But if you're just doing the room, y'all can't stay?
Yes, sir, I realize that, I don't know how if we're going to rent it, is my understanding we get thirty nights a year?
That's correct.
So all these people are waiting to rent their place out thirty nights a year?
That's short-term rental, so what happens is, game day weekend is when they usually do it, we have usually seven home games, which is about three days for the weekend, so it's twenty-one nights right there.
I got you.
Graduation.
Yeah, we're probably going to be here for the games.
Hmm?
I think we'll be here for the games.
So then you have, you'll have some other nights, but usually that's what people are doing, they're doing that. You got graduation, you got, uh, parents' weekend, and so usually it comes out, if you renew it, you get forty-five nights, and so, now you can do long-term rental, which is what, thirty-one days?
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Yes, anything over thirty-one days consecutively is considered a long-term rental, and you would not need any special approval by this board.
So if you wanted to put some traveling nurses in there, you wouldn't have to come and see us, and they stayed like thirty-one days, you wouldn't have to come, but only the short-term.
Uh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good example.
Makes sense?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We had one in opposition. Is there anyone present that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comment, Ms. Holt?
Uh, I have no issues with the staff recommendations of two adults and one vehicle.
Um, I have no issues either.
Okay, I think now that we've explained it, I think I don't have a problem with the two adults and one vehicle. Okay, uh, ZBA, uh, so we'll close board comment and I'll read the petition. ZBA dash forty-dash twenty-five, Tim Butel, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at fourteen-twenty-seven Deering Place, Zone SFR dash three-eight, Council District Four, uh, two adults, one vehicle, thirty nights, one-year probation, voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
Next case is ZBA forty-one-twenty-five, Carlicia Small, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a dwelling located at thirty-three-twenty-one Fourth Avenue, this property is on SFR two, Council District Seven. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view, there is one short-term rental in the general area. Here we have a view of that house with the driveway and parking area. So Carlicia Small will be the primary contact and will be available twenty-four hours a day in case of any emergencies. The petitioner will be located seven minutes from this property. They do not have experience managing short-term rentals, the house will be equipped with keypad locks, it is not owner-occupied, and it'll be used by family when it's not being rented short-term. House has three bedrooms and one bathroom, they request six adults, or eight adults and four vehicles, if approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. We did receive one comment in opposition to this request, do you have any questions for staff?
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Carlicia?
Hello, my name is Carlicia Small, my address is four-one-four Pinnacle Drive, Tuscaloosa, uh, three-five-four-oh-six, and I would like to try to get thirty-three-twenty-one Fourth Avenue approved for a short-term rental. I am, this is my first short-term rental, but I have experience, um, I have seven rental properties, um, and the home will be occupied when I'm not using it as a sho- short-term rental, my daughter will be, uh, occupying the, the home until somebody actually brings it out.
Okay, have you considered putting cameras in the home? Um, that's something most short-term rentals do, um, they have, I don't know if it's necessarily in the home, but they use cameras, um, have you considered that, or?
I have not, but it's not an issue, I can.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
Are you good with the staff's recommendation of six and three?
I am.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
We have one, uh, written comment of opposition, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and go to board comment.
Um, I have no issues with the staff recommendation, six adults and three vehicles for this property.
I'm, I'm in agreeance with that, no issue either.
Okay, I agree as well, um, six adults, three vehicles?
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
All right, so we'll close board comment, ZBA dash forty-one dash twenty-five, Carlicia Small, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty-three-twenty-one Fourth Avenue, Zone SFR dash two, Council District Seven, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation, voting, Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
Next case is ZBA forty-three-twenty-five, Jonathan Shear, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at thirty-seven-thirty-eight Crescent Gardens Drive, this property is on GPD, Council District Five. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view, there are no short-term rentals in the area, and then here we have a view of the house with that parking area. So Jonathan will be the primary contact and be available twenty-four hours a day in case of any emergencies. Francis Damian will also be available in any, uh, in case of any emergencies and is local to Tuscaloosa. The petitioner will be located in Tuscaloosa during the fall and spring school semesters, but then will be in Huntsville while not in school. The petitioner has experience managing properties through Shady Creek Realty, the house will be equipped with doorbell, uh, cameras, carbon monoxide detectors, fire alarms and keypad locks, it is owner-occupied, and it has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, the petitioner requests eight adults and six vehicles, if approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles, uh, we did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the applicant here in person, do you have any questions for staff?
No, thank you. Jonathan?
Good afternoon, my name is Jonathan Shear, I live at, uh, thirty-seven-thirty-eight Crescent Gardens Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, thirty-five-four-oh-four. Um, I'm also a student here at the University of Alabama, going into my second year, and I'm a business major, and I'm studying real estate, and I've worked with, uh, real estate companies in the past, looking to do a short-term rental on this property, um, it's, rentals are something that I would like to use within my career one day, and this is a great opportunity, and I think that this neighborhood, uh, is a great location for it, so I appreciate your time, thanks for allowing me to be here.
You look sharp. You presented really well, so make sure you tell your professor you did a good job. Um, I don't have any questions, um, you were going to be the first one in that neighborhood, I'm surprised nobody said anything, so, uh, that's going to be interesting right there. Um, I have no other comments.
The other person listed as a contact, they're in Tuscaloosa year-round.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have anybody for or against, uh, that signed up, anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public comment, we'll go with board comment.
I have no issues with the staff recommendations.
Um, yeah, I mean, kind of surprised there was no comment either, being the first one, but being there's not, um, I have no issues with the staff recommendation of six-three.
You did such a great presentation, you just run us over, you're okay with the six and three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, I have no issues.
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the, uh, petition. ZBA dash forty-three dash twenty-five, Jonathan Shear, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty-seven-thirty-eight Cres- cres- Crescent Gardens Drive, Zone GPD, Council District Five, uh, voting with, uh, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights and one-year probation?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
Next case is ZBA forty-four-twenty-five, Brooke Hamter, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property, this is at ten-twenty-seven Mortarwood Drive, Zone SFR three-H, Council District Four. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view, then all the short-term rentals in this area. Here we have a view of the house, the front driveway, and then they also have a parking pad located in the rear. So Brooke Hamter will be the primary contact and be available twenty-four hours a day in case of any emergencies, the petitioner is located in Tuscaloosa, they do not have experience managing short-term rentals, but has seven, several years of experience with long-term rentals, the house is equipped with keypad locks and a ring doorbell system, it is not owner-occupied, and it will be used by the applicant when it's not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, the petitioner requests eight adults and four vehicles, if approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. Uh, we did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the applicant here in person, do you have any questions for staff?
No. Thank you. Ms. Brooke?
Hello, I'm Brooke Hamter, um, we live at five-seven-two-one Candler Avenue here in Tuscaloosa, and we've owned the house for seven, uh, excuse me, around eight years, we've been renting it out to our children and their roommates, um, over the past eight years, per year, you know?
Now you want to make some money off of it?
Well, they've, they've graduated and they're done with school and professional school.
And they hadn't paid a lick of rent, huh?
Well. It's, it's been helpful for us, but, um, you know, it's run its course, so now we're looking to maybe switch to a short-term situation.
That'll be great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are you okay with the six and three? We go by bedrooms, and so that's what the main thing is.
Okay.
And so, any other questions for us or concerns?
Um, that's it.
All right, any questions for the petition? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No one signed up to speak for or against, we don't have any written opposition, so now, I'll, uh, close public comment and we'll go to board comment.
There were several other short-term rentals in the area, and, um, given the pictures, I have no issues with staff recommendations.
I'm, I'm also good with staff's recommendation of six and three.
I am as well.
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition, ZBA dash forty-four-twenty-five, Brooke Hamter, Hamter, uh, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at ten-twenty-seven Mortarwood Drive, Zone SFR dash three-H, Council District Four, uh, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year petition, voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition is approved.
All right, and our last case of the night is ZBA forty-five-twenty-five, Big Al Arids LLC, Eric and Rachel Allard, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property, this is at six-ten Hargrove Roads on SFR one, Council District Two, here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view, there are several short-term rentals in the area, and then here we have a view of the house, the driveway, and then the backyard parking area. Abby Haydo and Taylor Allard will be the primary contacts and be available in case of any emergencies, the petitioners are located in Texas, but Abby Haydo and Taylor Allard will be located in Tuscaloosa. They do have experience managing short-term rentals in the Texas market, the house will be equipped with smart keypad locks, security cameras, gated parking and a noise detection device, it is not owner-occupied, and it'll be used by the owners when it's not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, the petitioner requests eight adults and four vehicles, if approved, staff would recommend six adults and three vehicles, we did not have any public comment on this request, uh, do you have any questions for staff?
Nope, that's it, thank you. Rachel?
Good evening, my name is Rachel Allard, I live at, um, seventy-four-nineteen FM seventeen-seventy-four Road in Navasota, Texas, seven-seven-eight-six-eight, thank you for having me tonight, um, I think we're almost done. Um, we are petitioning for a short-term rental permit for the house at six-ten Hargrove, our daughter will be, um, attending the University of Alabama starting in the fall, we have fallen in love with the town here and intend to visit as much as possible, but when we're not, we would like to be able to, uh, use it as a short-term rental. Uh, we do have experience, uh, in Texas with, uh, short-term rental as well, and our kids have helped us with manage that and have learned how to operate that, we think it's a great learning experience for them. Uh, we do have a, um, Abby Haydo who lives in Northport, who will be managing it with us as well, who will be available, um, here locally twenty-four-seven, uh, as well as our daughter, Taylor, while she's here, um, for class, so thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you so much, no questions.
Okay.
And there's no one left to speak unless you guys from the city have something to say, or the police officer, nobody got anything? We'll close public comment and go to board comment.
Um, uh, for, there are other short-term rentals in the area, and so, um, yeah, I have no issues with the six adults and three vehicles.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance with staff's recommendation of six-three as well.
And based on the bo, the bedrooms, that's why we're doing the six and three, and so, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'll be fine with it.
Okay, and so I'm a, I'm in a favor of it as well.
I have no issues, I'm in favor.
All right, so reading this, uh, petition, ZBA dash forty, closing board comment, reading this petition, ZBA dash forty-five dash twenty-five, Big Allards LLC, Eric and Rachel Allard, uh, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at six-ten Hargrove Road, Zone SFR dash one, Council District Two, uh, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation, voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Petition approved.